Good morning, on behalf of the Commissioners and citizens of Pitt County, I welcome each one that's here today. We'll have an address meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please.
I forgot what I am. This one? Yes. Number one. One. Uh, we just won. Okay.
Thank you, Beth. We will now stand and we will have our invocation and pledge, please. Everybody stand, please.
Dear Lord, on behalf of the citizens of this region, we just want to thank you. Thank you for your mercies and blessings. We are grateful for your continued grace and pleas that you've granted us. All these things, I pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, are there any additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, let's vote. All right, Mr. Elliott, I believe you're up next.
Yes, sir. Your first item of business is the Employee Service Awards, and if you're ready, we can get down front and present those.
All right.
Well, this morning, as we do quarterly, we're recognizing our workforce for their tenure with our organization, Pitt County Government, and we're going to be recognizing all the way up to a 40-year category, down to a five-year category. So they will be special. So if you hold your applause until after each round of category, and then we'll proceed from there. So in five years, first we have Rosa Andrews with the Detention Center. Marvin Black, otherwise known as Brad Black, MIS. Michelle Boston, Social Services.
How do you pronounce that one?
Kamada.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Dan Bunting, Detention Center.
Appreciate you serving.
James Council, Solid Waste and Recycling.
Thank you.
Christopher Curtis, Detention Center. Kermit Darnell, otherwise known as Lee Darnell, Sheriff's Office.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
You look like it was this year.
Melinda Gorm, Inspections. Gassado? Sheriff's Office. Good, she's not here. She didn't know how I slaughtered her name. Okay. Jim Main, Tax Administration. Kristen Nichols, Legal.
I be screwing up people's names.
Formerly Health Department, new to legal.
Thank you.
Jamon Ross, Detention Center. Iva Smith, Public Health. Elizabeth Still, Public Health. Robert Turcot, Tax Administration. Karen White, Detention Center.
Appreciate you serving. Thank you.
And our last five-year is to Joni Young Torres, Corporate Extension. We can have a round of applause. Moving to our tenure, we have Jessica Branch, Emergency Management. Chad Clark, Sheriff's Department, Office. June Fleming, Board of Elections. Justin Jones, Sheriff's Office.
Seems like longer than.
Jimmy Letchworth, Detention Center. Mason Paramore, Sheriff's Office. I'd say our attendance this morning is outstanding. Really is.
I think that's good.
Denise Urban, Financial Services. Catherine Warham, Warham, Public Health. And our last tenure is to Patrick Waters, Sheriff's Office.
Congratulations. Appreciate you. Congratulations, Lisa.
All right. All right, moving quickly to our 15-year, we have, first one is Marion Baker, Social Services.
Congratulations.
Susan Britt, Financial Services. Natoya Bollock, Detention Center.
Bollock. Get out of my hair.
Halfway there. Congratulations.
Stephen Collingwood, Emergency Management.
Detention Center.
Dave Davis, Elections. Latarcha Jones, Tax Administration.
Reflexes are terrible.
Elizabeth Nichols, Detention Center. Sandra Parks, Public Health. Heather Rufton, Social Services.
I can change.
Thank you.
Angeline Wallace, Social Services. Gregory White, Emergency Management. Shayna Williams, Social Services.
Gina.
And that's our 15-years. All right, moving to our 20-year. On the 20-year recognition, we've got the blue boxes on the table that recognize when you get a 20-year award, you get to pick out a watch from a jewelry store in town and to recognize those 20 years of service. So the first one is to Brenda Braxton, Social Services.
Thank you.
Cynthia Asprey.
Tracy Cash, Planning Department. Nellie King, Social Services. She's not here. Okay. Shannon Stewart, Sheriff's Office.
It's a puppy.
She said it's a puppy.
And our last 20-years to Scott Tanner, Sheriff's Office.
I can't blame you after 20 years.
Come on. All right, 25-years, we have Teresa Barfield, Detention Center.
She's been in jail long.
Bill Brantley, Imaging Services and Mailroom. Clemmie German, Sheriff's Office. Hattie Joyner, Detention Center. Regina Randolph, Detention Center. Anne Clinton Williams, Detention Center. All right, round of applause. All right, two categories left. We will move into the 30-year category. We have three employees who are being recognized for that magic 30-years. Paula Clark, Solid Waste and Recycling.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. James F. Rhodes, Planning Director.
Looking for 30 more.
Thank you.
Been that other way.
She was looking for 30 more.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, our third and last 30-year award is to Nanette Wainwright, Communications.
We also like to take a seat here, perhaps.
All right, applause. All right, we have one last category this morning, that's for a 40-year recognition, and I've decided to come up with a new special rule this year. On the 20-year recognition, the employees get to select a watch. I think on the 40-year recognition, this employee should give their watch back. Just kidding. But Mike Rogers, Buildings and Grounds Superintendent. Is he here?
Me, too.
He's not here. He's taking care of facilities, so, okay.
Let's give him a hand.
There's going to be a small reception at the back. We're going to take a break for that. Everybody's invited to just line up on that side and go through. And just on behalf of the board, I'd like to say that, you know, the county doesn't work without you all. These are just small tokens of our appreciation. We can never really measure that out in doing this, but just something to know that we do think about you and that we do appreciate everything you do for the citizens of this county. We have almost 180,000 people that depend on you every day, so no matter what your job is in the county, you're improving their quality of life, and we can't do enough or say enough about you. So we appreciate you, and form your lineup over there, and breakfast is on us this morning.
Mr. Manager, do you have the public address to the board?
Yes, sir. We have one person signed up, Cory Williams, if they'll come forward and give their name and address.
Come around, Mr. Williams.
If the attorney will briefly give the statement on public addresses.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. If you'll state your name and address, I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
Yes, my name is Cory Williams, and I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. I actually am borrowed from our Field Operations Center East, so I'm coming from Sacramento. I flew in on Thursday to help those that were affected by Hurricane Florence. So, again, my name is Cory Williams, and I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. And a lot of people, you know, whenever they think of Small Business Administration, they think that traditionally we only help out businesses. However, in times of disaster, we're able to help out businesses, homeowners, renters, and nonprofits. And we have a business recovery center right now located here in Pitt County at East Carolina University. I believe it's at the Willis Building, and it's kind of the one-stop shop for the business owners that were affected. And one of the biggest things that I want to emphasize, you know, thankfully, Pitt County didn't have as much physical damage as a result of Hurricane Florence. However, a number of businesses in the area may have suffered what's considered economic injury. Due to the mandatory evacuations or even due to power outages, you know, a number of businesses may have sustained a loss for three or four days. And for that business owner, you know, whether it's, you know, three or four days, that could be $20,000, $25,000 of revenue. And for a small business owner, that's somewhat hard to recoup in a matter of, you know, it may take a month. It may take two or three months to be able to recoup that money. And that's why we opened up a business recovery center here in Pitt County to service the business owners that were affected economically. And it's kind of like a trickle-down effect, what I would say, is that, you know, whenever you think of economic injury, you think, okay, I didn't have the physical loss, but let's say with East Carolina being here in Greenville, a lot of teen, you know, a lot of people come to the East Carolina games. Well, let's say somebody in Carteret County or one of the other devastated counties, well, they may now, you know, having to fix their home, they may not come to the East Carolina games, which is going to affect the hotels, which is going to affect the restaurants, which is also going to affect the revenue and tourism. So, it's kind of that trickle-down effect, and I just wanted to make sure that the business owners are aware of the economic injury disaster loan program. In addition, if someone has registered with FEMA, they can also turn in their home loan or their application, if they are a renter, to the business recovery center. We are closing loans every day at that business recovery center, so, and they don't have to actually be a Pitt County resident. They could be from any of the surrounding areas. So, the interest rates are as low as four, I mean, actually 3.675% for business owners. And for homeowners and renters, the interest rates are as low as 2%. Now, for anybody that was affected, it is a one-year deferment on all of our loans.
That's all right. Go ahead and finish. You've got something we need to know.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. So, with all of our loans, it's a one-year deferment, so anybody that's affected in Pitt County will have at least, you know, have that one year to do all the repairs they need before they actually start the repayment process. And lastly, if there's anybody in Pitt County that has an existing SBA loan, then there's also a nine-month deferment, being that they are in a disaster-declared area. So, that's one of the, one of the things I passed along to Mike Emery, the Public Information Officer. I think he's going to post it on the Pitt County Recovery website, that anybody, even from a previous storm, whether it's Matthew or all the different storms unfortunately that have hit North Carolina, they are eligible for that additional nine-month deferment. Again, thank you, Commissioners, for your time, and I will be available, you know, for questions if, you know, necessary.
Thank you for your information, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. All right, next, Scott.
Okay, next, we have the item's report, settlement of taxes. We have Sam Kroom, our newly-appointed tax administrator.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. The first item is the settlement of taxes in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 105, 373D. Settlement of taxes is submitted on behalf of Deputy Tax Collector Raymond Ravela, and this is for the period of July 1 through August 31st of this year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yes, we've got the August 31st, 2018 tax collection report. All right, go ahead.
Pitt County combined collection rate for real and personal property taxes for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 61.78%. This time last year was 63.75%.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Let me say, I appreciate the effort in getting that information so that we might fully understand what we are voting on, and it seems very reasonable that we add this to our list, so I move that we do.
I second.
Read the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, sir. Next.
Next, we have the monthly financial report by Brian Burnett.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the month ending on April, I mean, excuse me, August 31st, 2018, our financials are exactly where we should be for the first two months of the fiscal year. We have spent roughly 16.8%, and we have brought in 32.8% of our budgeted revenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, right hand.
Item C, Hurricane Florence response and overview. If Allen Everett will come up. We have a short presentation. Just wanted to kind of recap the activities. Even though Pitt County was not directly hit or affected by this hurricane, we were indirectly, and we provided a lot of out-of-county assistance. And Allen's just going to give an overview quickly as to our response.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's hard to believe that almost two years ago, we were here talking about Hurricane Matthew, and today, we stand here talking about Hurricane Florence. You know, our message is always that of be prepared. It only takes one, you know, each year when the National Weather Service puts together their hurricane forecasts, they always talk about it's going to be above-normal, normal, below-normal year, whatever the case may be. But the message is always, it takes one, and so far, we can see that it's taken one so far for us here in eastern North Carolina. As Scott was saying, we are going to give an update on Hurricane Florence. I would like to start this one in the presentation first by showing a, about a 60-second video clip that our Public Information Office has put together to sort of help set the stage for the slide presentation that I'm going to do following that, that short video, so if we could go ahead and roll the video.
I've been in this, in this area for many years. However, just as Mother Nature can destroy, human nature can prepare.
It is expected to remain a Category 4 as it approaches landfall along the coast. Landfall is expected Thursday night into Friday morning as a major hurricane. A hurricane watch has been issued for our area. Pitt County Emergency Management has been actively tracking Florence and developing plans since last Thursday. We've held meetings with our partner and agencies that provide staffing to the County Emergency Operations Center during times of activation to discuss the hurricane operational needs. In addition to opening shelters, we have also requested assistance from the National Guard, as well as Swiftwater rescue teams. We have a slogan in Pitt County Emergency Management that is "One family, one focus." I can assure our community that all the organizations that are here with us today stand ready to do what we can to help everyone weather the storm. Thank you.
Okay, and again, that was a video put together by our Public Information Office. In terms of an actual update, what I'd like to do is just kind of go through and just hit the highlights of, of the events that we were associated with relating to the storm. Of course, as we know, it's been well documented that it was a massive Category 4 storm as it was approaching our coast. We were preparing for a storm in terms of our preparations as if it was going to actually be a landfalling Category 4. It did make landfall as a Category 1, and even though it's a Category 1, it did major damage to eastern North Carolina. And talking with some of the individuals from the National Weather Service, places like Elizabetown in southeast North Carolina actually received 36 inches of rain. We here in the Pitt County area received around, you know, 12 inches of rain, so it was indeed a massive storm. Some of our initial actions, of course, you know, in the emergency management, our goal is always inform our partners and make the community aware of whatever's on the horizon, and this storm was no different. We had plans in place days prior to the storm making landfall on the 13th. We actually started on Thursday the 6th, and that is communicating information to our partner and agencies, making them aware that this storm was churning out in the Atlantic. On the 7th, Jim McCarthy from our office actually worked with our Public Information Office to actually start putting together social media information, and of course, on Sunday the 9th, our staff actually came to work to make sure that our plans were finalized for the anticipation of the storm making landfall in eastern North Carolina. And of course, as you recall, on the 10th, this board actually executed the state of emergency. So, one of the things that we did this year that's, that's new to us, that really our Public Information Office has helped us with, is this concept called the Joint Information System.
... of the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. In addition, if someone has registered with FEMA, they can also turn in their home loan or their application, if they are a renter, to the Business Recovery Center. We are closing loans every day at that Business Recovery Center, so, and they don't have to actually be a Pitt County resident. It could be from any of the surrounding areas. So, the interest rates are as low as four, I mean, actually, three point six seven five percent for business owners. And for homeowners and renters, the interest rates are as low as two percent. Now, for anybody that was affected, is a one-year deferment on all of our loans.
That's all right. Go ahead and finish. You've got something we need to know.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. So, with all of our loans, it's a one-year deferment, so, anybody that's affected in Pitt County will have at least, you know, have that one year to do all the repairs they need before they actually start the repayment process. And lastly, if there's anybody in Pitt County that has an existing SBA loan, then there's also a nine-month deferment, being that they are in a disaster-declared area. So, that's one of the things I passed along to Mike Emery, the Public Information Officer. I think he's going to post it on the Pitt County Recover website, that anybody, even from a previous storm, whether it's Matthew or all the different storms, unfortunately, that have hit North Carolina, they are eligible for that additional nine-month deferment. Again, thank you, Commissioners, for your time, and I will be available, you know, for questions if, you know, necessary.
Thank you for your information, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. All right, next, Scott.
Okay, next, we have items report settlement of taxes. We have Sam Kroom, our newly-appointed tax administrator.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
The first item is the settlement of taxes in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 105, 373D. Settlement of taxes is submitted on behalf of Deputy Tax Collector Raymond Ravela, and this is for the period of July 1 through August 31 of this year.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
All right, let's vote. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yes, we got the August 2018 tax collection report.
All right, go ahead.
Pitt County combined collection rate for real and personal property taxes for fiscal year 2018, 2019, is sixty-one point seven eight percent. This time last year, it was sixty-three point seven five.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
All right, let's vote.
If you'll vote by hand, our machine seems to have a quick...
Still not working, though.
We're getting there.
Everybody got that? Thank you.
We're doing need to do the same on the other one.
Thank you, sir. Did you get the vote on the other one?
If you will vote on the other one again, for the record, that'd be great.
All right. Everybody read the vote?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Okay, next, we have the proposed legislative goal as a follow-up to the meeting for last on the cow share unpasteurized milk. County Attorney thinks he can handle this one.
Yes, now, this was at your meeting the last time on your longer list of goals, and there were some questions that were raised about the position of the dairy farmers and whether or not we had any dairy farms in Pitt County. I did include some information in your weekly packet. That's also included in your agenda. There are no dairy farms in Pitt County. The closest is in Green, and the position of the Dairy Farmers Association supports the legislative goal as it has been proposed and their fuller statement, and we appreciate the efforts of Dr. Morrow and Lee Guth in gathering that information to bring back to you today.
Much pleasure to vote, Mr. Gass.
Let me say, I appreciate the effort in getting that information so that we might fully understand what we are voting on, and it seems very reasonable that we add this to our list, so I move that we do.
I second it.
Read the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thanks, sir. Next.
Next, we have the monthly financial report by Brian Burnett.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the month ending on April, I mean, excuse me, August 31, 2018, our financials are exactly where we should be for the first two months of the fiscal year. We have spent roughly sixteen point eight percent, and we have brought in thirty-two point eight percent of our budgeted revenue.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor, right hand. So ordered. Thank you. All right, Mr. Elliott.
All right, and the manager's report, first item, is your next two meeting dates will be October 15 at 6:00 PM and then Monday, November 5 at 9:00 AM. Item B, you've probably seen some newspaper coverage on this media coverage regarding the scheduled North Carolina Supreme Court visit to Pitt County has been postponed due to all of the flooding in eastern North Carolina. There are actually three different sites they're going to be holding session in, Pitt County being one of those three, but due to all of the flooding issues, they have decided to postpone that. We're hoping that it will be held in the spring of 2019. Talking to senior resident Superior Court Judge Marvin Blunt, he's anticipating that we'll have this back on the docket to occur in the spring, and then we'll let you know about everything rescheduled at that point.
Okay.
Item C, Hurricane Florence response and overview, if Allen Everett will come up. We have a short presentation. Just wanted to kind of recap the activities. Even though Pitt County was not directly hit or affected by this hurricane, we were indirectly, and we provided a lot of out-of-county assistance, and Allen's just going to give an overview quickly as to our response.
Good morning. It's hard to believe that almost two years ago, we were here talking about Hurricane Matthew, and today, we stand here talking about Hurricane Florence. You know, our message is always that of be prepared. It only takes one, you know, each year when the National Weather Service puts together the hurricane forecasts, they always talk about it's going to be above-normal, normal, below-normal year, whatever the case may be. But the message is always, it takes one, and so far, we can see that it's taken one so far for us here in eastern North Carolina. As Scott was saying, we are going to give an update on Hurricane Florence. I would like to start this morning, the presentation, first by showing about a 60-second video clip that our Public Information Office has put together to sort of help set the stage for the slide presentation that I'm going to do following that short video, so if we could go ahead and roll the video.
... I want him to say something about the mosquitoes, because people out there...
...in this area for many years. However, just as Mother Nature can destroy, human nature can repair.
It is expected to remain a category four as it approaches landfall along the coast. Landfall is expected Thursday night into Friday morning as a major hurricane. A hurricane watch has been issued for our area. Pitt County Emergency Management has been actively tracking Florence and developing plans since last Thursday. We've held meetings with our partner and agencies that provide staffing to the County Emergency Operations Center during times of activation to discuss the hurricane operational needs. In addition to opening shelters, we have also requested assistance from the National Guard, as well as Swiftwater rescue teams. We have a slogan in Pitt County Emergency Management that is "One family, one focus." I can assure our community that all the organizations that are here with us today stand ready to do what we can to help everyone weather the storm. Thank you.
Okay, and again, that was a video put together by our Public Information Office. In terms of an actual update, what I'd like to do is just kind of go through and just hit the highlights of the events that we were associated with relating to the storm. Of course, as we know, it's been well documented that it was a massive category four storm as it was approaching our coast. We were preparing for a storm in terms of our preparations as if it was going to actually be a landfalling category four. It did make landfall as a category one, and even though it's category one, it did major damage to eastern North Carolina. And talking with some of the individuals from the National Weather Service, places like Elizabetown in southeast North Carolina actually received 36 inches of rain. We here in the Pitt County area received around, you know, 12 inches of rain, so it was indeed a massive storm. Some of our initial actions, of course, you know, in the emergency management, our goal is always inform our partners and make the community aware of whatever's on the horizon, and this storm was no different. We had plans in place days prior to the storm making landfall on the 13th. We actually started on Thursday, the 6th, and that is communicating information to our partner and agencies, making them aware that this storm was churning out in the Atlantic. On the 7th, Jim McCarthy from our office actually worked with our Public Information Office to actually start putting together social media information, and of course, on Sunday, the 9th, our staff actually came to work to make sure that our plans were finalized for the anticipation of the storm making landfall in eastern North Carolina. And of course, as you recall, on the 10th, this board actually executed the state of emergency. So, one of the things that we did this year that's new to us, that really our Public Information Office has helped us with, is this concept called the Joint Information System. And what this is, it's really involved the Public Information Office spearheading a joint information system, really a press conference, if you will, and it was held at the AHEC facility here in Greenville. And what its purpose was, was to provide a single location where the media and the public could learn about the response as it relates to all the different agencies that would be involved with such an event. So, we had really good participation, and as you can see, a number of our partner agencies around the county were actually invited and participated in that particular event. And the video that you just saw a moment ago was actually taken from that venue. That particular conference that we had, we did stream it live on our YouTube channel, as well as Facebook, and it was viewed over 1,600 times, and I think it's important to note that this was the first time ever we had done something like this, and that is a direct reflection on our Public Information Office staff working through this concept several months prior to, and actually implementing it for this particular event for the first time, very successful. So, when we move into the Emergency Operations Center, I know that's one thing that people always like to hear about, the EOC, as it's commonly referred to. We actually activated the center on Wednesday, September the 12th, and we were activated for non-continuous stage with a number of different departments working around the clock assisting. And I've got to stop here and just say thanks to everybody, because it's truly a team effort. The staff of Pitt County Emergency Management cannot operate that EOC alone. The vast majority of the folks you see in this room today, at some point or another, were actually in the facility down there helping us, and even beyond the individuals that are here today. And also, our partners from North Carolina Emergency Management are here in support of us today, as well as our FEMA partners are here with us today as well, so it truly detects all of us working together. And we terminated the operation of the EOC on Friday, September the 21st. Anytime we have an event like this, we're going to open shelters. We want to be able to make sure that we can get people out of harm's way. This storm obviously was no exception. We had pre-staged equipment at Pitt County schools. Obviously, you know, that's the group that we partner with for shelters, so we had worked with Pitt County schools to go ahead and pre-stage where we're going to open up shelters. The decision was made to open up five general population shelters, along with one special medical need shelter for the aging population, for the frail. We opened those shelters on Wednesday, the 12th. We opened them at EBA Cock, Welcome Middle, Aiden Middle, Hope Middle, Faulkland Middle. Of course, the special medical need shelter was opened at EBA Cock. During the course of this event, the sheltering operations, we housed nearly 1,000 citizens in those shelters during this event. In addition to opening up the human shelters, we also opened up the animal shelters, and we housed over 200 pets, you know, for this event, just like we did during Matthew. During this event, because it was such a large spread event throughout North Carolina, Red Cross actually ran out of sleeping cots, as did many other counties, so we here in Pitt County, some of our shelters, we actually ran out of cots one particular night, so we were able to secure some cots from the Boy Scouts of America, East Carolina Council, as well as East Carolina University actually loaned us some exercise mats, so that those individuals in the shelters would have, you know, some form of comfort, you know, to rest on. And these cots and all, I think it's important to say that the dedication of county staff, you know, it was pouring down rain, and they were out gathering these cots and delivering them at midnight to do what we could to try to help our citizens in need at the time. During sheltering operations, we lost power, utility power down in the Aiden area, and we have a shelter down at Aiden Griffin, I'm sorry, at Aiden Middle. But for the several hours that we were without power, our friends at the Aiden Fire Department, as well as the Faulkland Fire Department, they came together to help us establish a temporary power supply, so that our individuals there would have some degree of electricity with air movement while the utilities were being worked on. Continuing with our shelters, something that's really been a two-year project, that is to come up with a transitional sheltering program, so that when we have individuals in shelters, we're not keeping them in schools for an extended period of time, because we want to be sensitive to our school schedules, and how can we have some kind of a transition or step-down sheltering program? So, we've actually been working on this project for about two years, and this project is designed to transition from moving our citizens from public schools into our churches. This was the first time that we were actually able to implement this program. It's two years into making, and much success with our faith-based community. And again, as I said, this actually, this program actually helps to lessen the impact on the school system, so they can return to some degree of normalcy, but it also allows us to work with the individuals that are in the shelters to find out what kind of roadblocks they may be facing personally, and allowing them to get back home. So, huge success, learning curve, absolutely. We had some learning curves with this program for the first time, but we'll take those as positive as we move forward. Special thanks to Landmark Baptist Church, and also Holly Hill Freeway Baptist Church for being the first two groups to step up and help us with this program. We have about 17 different churches throughout the community that are willing to help us, but these were the first two that we asked, and so much success and partnership with those folks, and so we actually scaled the shelters down from nearly 1,000 occupancy to about 100 as we transition into the faith-based community. In terms of shelter operations, again, we can't do it alone. DSS, Pitt Area Transit, the Sheriff's Department, Public Health, all played key roles in helping us to operate these shelters. In terms of additional resources, obviously, we want to make sure that we're helping our responders to be prepared with whatever situation may come forward. This map is a really interesting map, because what it highlights, it highlights all the states that sent resources to North Carolina. So, you can see that this was a widespread event that brought resources in from all over the country into North Carolina. Now, with that, part of our plan was to ask for two Swiftwater rescue teams, in case we had rushing water, flooding waters, and we needed to make rescues, we would have specialized teams in here to help our local fire and EMS community and law enforcement communities. So, we actually had a team from the state of California, and as well as a team from the state of Indiana, to come in here to provide Swiftwater rescue services for us during this event, as well as we had three National Guard units from North Carolina here with us to help with whatever situations we would have. And of course, this just shows that, you know, in addition to having those resources, locally, we were also creative, again, because of lessons learned, like with Matthew. We learned that if we have a Matthew-type situation, the Bell War community is going to be cut off in terms of being able to get an EMS unit from the Faulkland EMS station over there. So, we stood up an EMS unit and actually staged it at the fire station, so that if we had some type of roads that were impassable, we had an EMS unit on that side of the river as well. We also placed our spare QRV in service for this event down in the Blackjack here, because, again, flooding concerns down south, so we were able to do some creative things with the resources that we had in-house. In terms of our communications, as you know, for several years now, we've been working to enhance our communication project, our 911 system. Part of that involves having a backup 911 center. For this particular event, we had all the telecommunicators on duty for a period of time. We sent half of our dispatchers to the backup center, the other half were here at the main center. We had a situation of where, when you dialed 911, when the person made the call to 911, downstairs, those telecommunicators would answer the call, but our telecommunicators at the backup center were dispatching the call. It was a very seamless process. I'm not even sure that the fire and EMS community even knew what was occurring, because it was so seamless behind the scenes. So, again, something that we, as a county, can really be proud of, how we're utilizing the infrastructure that we have to be as creative as we can. That's, again, that's what this system is designed to do. We also, something that was very, that was very important, was the fact that we have a Motorola system. Well, the local radio shop for Motorola actually had a technician on standby here with us in case something happened, again, because we now have multiple tower sites. We had not experienced a potential category four storm making landfall in eastern North Carolina, so we were ramped up and actually had communication technicians available here if we had any type of concerns. And we also, you've heard us talk about our shower trailer, which is an enclosed trailer that has six showers in it. We actually deployed that out at the backup center, so that anyone that needed to take a shower, you know, we had that service available as well, you know, just for the hygiene concerns of individuals. In terms of power outages, you know, anytime we have a major event like this, we're subject to having power outages. This storm was no exception. The areas from Grumson through Griffin were impacted the greatest in terms of power outages. County government assisted these areas with providing water and meals ready to eat, commonly known as MREs, to those areas, and we did so in partnership with our municipal partners. The leaders in the Griffin community and in the Grumson area, we partnered with those leaders to make sure that we were able to help them get the items that they needed, as well as we worked with the Salvation Army, the Red Cross, and the Baptist Men to provide mobile feeding distribution routes through those areas while power was out. Roads and bridge outages, if you recall, during Matthew, at one time, we had 70-plus roads that were impassable during Matthew. This time, not quite as bad. We actually had about 50 roads that were impassable during the event. One thing that we did enhance for this particular storm is we actually have a road closure map that our MISGIS, our Planning Infrastructure Group, that they work on, along with our 911. So, when roads are reported as being out, for whatever reason, we can plot that on a map, and we can kind of keep that live, if you will, and I'm proud to say that we actually had several law enforcement agencies stop by the EOC and wanted to learn how they could integrate that into their response out in the field after this event. So, really, a great partnership with many agencies here. In terms of donations, you know, people are always wanting to help, and we want to make sure that we can get these individuals connected with the right agencies to help. So, during the event, in terms of donation information, we actually list on our websites locations where the individuals could go and donate to help those individuals that were in need, so we actually had that posted up on our social media accounts. Public information was a big deal, and it is a big deal. It's important that we're able to communicate with our community, as well as our responders and others, about the events going on. For this particular event, we had on our website, we had over 45,000 views, you know, from September the 8th through the 23rd, so a lot of people were looking at our social media accounts during this particular event. Also, as we said a moment ago, we started posting to social media on that Friday, the 7th, and we basically took all county information that would be posted on any form of social media, and we redirected it to the county emergency management page, so that everyone could go to one location for one source shopping, if you will. Through those avenues, we reached over 82,000 folks. We had nearly 46,000 of those folks had some degree of interaction with the contents that our Public Information Office put together. We had 1,200 new page likes, which was a 40% increase from normal activity, so you can see, social media does what public information is truly important. In terms of, once we had sort of weathered the storm, others we knew were not as okay as we were, and so, you know, with that, requests started being asked for, hey, what can you do, or what can we do to help? So, in terms of resources that were deployed, I'm proud to say that we, Pitt County, our first responder community, we answered the rally. We did our best to try to make sure that our community was protected, but also, at the same time, if we could spare some resources to go help those individuals that were in worse need than we were, we wanted to do so. So, we actually sent one of our EMS units with the crew member to Orange County for a week to help those folks out with a massive operation of sheltering that they had going on. Public Health actually sent some refrigerated medical equipment to Lenore County for their mobile hospital. We also sent our special medical needs trailer to the mobile hospital in Kentstown, as well as the portable shower that I made reference to a moment ago. We actually sent that over to the state, so that they could deploy it to some of the coastal counties. Law enforcement community, Chief Gentry and Sheriff Alps worked really hard in helping out on the law enforcement side of the house, and, you know, in helping out some of our neighbors as well. Mike Emery, our Public Information Officer, was actually asked to go to Sampson County to help out not only the county, but also the city of Clinton. So, you can see that, you know, we're taking care of the situation at home, but we're also trying to help those others that are in need as well. Truly is a team effort. So, now, we've been given a disaster declaration, as you've heard, and so with that, that means that Pitt County has been declared for both individual assistance and public assistance, so that opens up an opportunity to help different agencies and individuals with items that they may have suffered or have been impacted with during the storm. So, we are continuing to put information out on our social media accounts, making individuals aware of where we are in the disaster recovery, so that is ongoing. And I would say that in terms of the disaster recovery, again, we have our state partners here from North Carolina Emergency Management, as well as our federal partners. Our FEMA reps are here. These are the folks that have been assigned to help us here in Pitt County, so we are having daily conversations in terms of what it is that we need to do to identify the needs and help move those needs forward, and also with our small business. You heard from Corey a few minutes ago as well, from the disaster recovery. So, truly is a team effort. It takes all of us working together, you know, thank each of you for your support. Janice was in the EOC with us several days, as was Scott and Mike and Brian, and everyone was there. Chief Gentry was there around the clock for a number of days as well, so, you know, our fire and EMS community, you know, again, we say they're second to none, so, you know, they're prepared, and they're prepared to help weather any storm. So, you know, I could go on and on, but again, I just want to say that, you know, it truly was a partnership, and I would just say that in closing, in talking with the National Weather Service, they said, Allen, the thing you need to keep in mind for Pitt County, had this storm travel 20 to 40 miles north, Pitt County would be like Craven County is today. So, we were very fortunate. We have individuals that are hurting, but there's individuals and communities that have greater impact than we do this morning, so thank you.
Allen, if I can just add real quick, in terms of the DSS and Health Department staff, the county is responsible for manning the shelters for the first 72 hours and sometimes thereafter, with, you know, whether it's the public health nurses, the social workers, and so forth. Then thereafter, the American Red Cross comes in and takes over, but also even after the storm has kind of ended per se, the DSS staff are out manning three different sites for disaster crew stamps applications, and that is, I think, what are the dates on that? Jan?
It was starting last Friday through October the 6th, so this comes Saturday.
So, they're actually have worked this past weekend and are working extended hours, even though the event is over, it's not over, so just wanted to recognize that, too.
Yeah, it's true. Yeah, part of, important part of the recovery phase, yes.
I think mosquito and vector control is probably another hot button topic right now. There's been, we've put a lot of information out via the Public Information Office on the Florence page, and there's been articles in the newspaper. If anybody has questions about spraying, where it is occurring, the Environmental Health Department is handling this. If they would call 902-3200, they can get information, or again, check our webpage.
Allen, on behalf of your presentation this morning, for the members of this board and the citizens of Pitt County, there's not much we can say, but say thank you, thank you, thank you. The pre-warning that was received by the citizens of this county, providers, by the follow-up by providers, but I was in a discussion the other day, and the person put a specific connotation to it. They said, well, you've got all these providers which perform all these services. He says, it was a he, too, said Pitt County becomes a caretaker. So, it's not only you provide, but the personal effect, the significance that you give to each individual person is considered a caretaker, and we are very thankful to you and your staff and everybody that does this. We are totally blessed eternally for everything that we've been given during this storm, and we thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say exactly what you said, and the fact that the county is directed to direct this, any kind of tragedy like this, or any kind of natural disaster, and I'm just so impressed with, you know, it's important that you grow from one storm to the other, or you grow from one year to the other, or one day to the other. We have just done a remarkable job. Thank you all for being here, all of you from other areas, but thank you mostly to all of our county people, our employees, and especially for the leadership. It is phenomenal, and if you do go down in the EOC and just see what's going on, it's amazing, so we pat yourself on the back. We are.
Well, our staff from Emergency Management is here, so, you know, I've got to give kudos to our staff members. They do a great job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Every day, not just when there's a tragedy.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager.
Okay, two other items real quick. Item E, just want to announce, the Public Health Director, Dr. John Morrow, has announced his retirement, I believe, for December 31st. We will be working with the Board of Health to try to get that advertised as soon as possible. I know in, prior to Dr. Morrow's coming onboard with Pitt County 18, 20 years ago, it took a protracted amount of time, maybe a year and a half, to identify a public health director, so we're going to be working with the Public Health Board to try to go ahead and get that advertisement out as quickly as possible, and try to streamline candidates so that the Board of Health can make a decision on that appointed position, so we won't hopefully be in a position we were prior to his arrival. The last thing I have, we have an item on consent dealing with the second reading for the naming of a basketball, pickleball court at the District Park. We have... We have landed on a date for that ceremony. Will we get information out to you, but just tend to leave right now, November 2nd at 10 o'clock, that we'll push out information, further information on that as we move along. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have a motion for consent?
Second.
All in favor, and capable, raise your right hand. So ordered. Okay, item for decision, under 10, number one. What's the pleasure?
I move for accepting the resolution to approve the continuing contract for capital outlets.
Do we have a second? All in favor, and capable, raise your right hand. So ordered, thank you. Okay, the number two on item 10, what's the feelings of the board?
I see a resolution, the amended policy.
Second. All in favor, and capable, raise your right hand. Order passed, next.
Next, you have the appointment to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee on page 72. You have the recommendation for Judy Jackson and Pamela Matthews to be appointed to serve on this HCCBG committee.
Move both of those names, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, next.
Next, on the Pitt County Nursing Home/Adult Care Community Advisor Committee, you have a recommendation from the Mid East Commission for Dr. Cody Chulon and a Ms. Jessica Brown to be appointed, and a reappointment of Dr. Thomas Gould from PCC.
Motion approved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, next.
Next, you have appointments, I'm sorry, appointment to the Pitt County Development Commission. On that, on page 103, you have a recommendation for Dr. Harry Plume, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, to be appointed to the Development Commission.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered. We've got a request for a closed session. Madam Attorney, will you take us up, please?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A3, attorney-client privilege to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege, and also under GS 143318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of otherwise confidential information. If you will so move.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor, raise your right hand. If you all give us a few minutes, we'll be back.